Go ahead. It's unmuted.
Stephanie, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, good. Hopefully you can see us too.
We can see you.
Michael, how are you doing? I don't have 30 years now, right?
No, no, not at all.
Right.
No, and to the extent that I speak. Drastically.
Stephanie, how are you feeling?
My COVID test is negative and she gave me two more medications just to help the park calm down. So she says there's so much going around right now with this.
Thank you. I'm not from art, but I think you may have a similar. So anybody tuning in tonight, we have one communication. We're down on Commissioner, we have one Commissioner attending and meeting virtually, which is allowed under law. Right now, sure. This is highly unusual and we are just speaking here. Well, this weekend. It is legal, takes the government, a governor's exception of the order. Maybe a time, so we are good. We're all compliant, so we're ready to go whenever you want. Okay, I called the July 20th, 2021, ready to record me. One public park district to order, please, please call. Wait, it's 7:02. Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobby Dabson, Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
President Brooks? Here, do we say permission to record again or no? Uh, yes, you can you, um, yes, can everybody tell, commission reports, are you? Yes, okay, so.
Uh, permission to report.
Permission to record.
Permission to record. All right, all right. Moving on to consent agenda items, April 18. Does any commissioner want any items pulled from the consent agenda items?
No.
No.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So.
Second.
Okay, we'll call vote please. Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
President Brooks? Yes, motion passes. It is our practice not to address questions at this time, however, we will take comments under advisement. Is there anyone who would like to make a verbal comment? If so, please limit comments to three minutes per person. Um, I just wanted to make a note that we are doing public feedback for the lot for innovation, so if anybody wants to do, come into that, they can do so after our report. So we'll do another kind of open dialogue, which will be. That makes sense, yes. I did have one that came in at 6:15 today from Adam. Oops, we lost it. No, pause, Chris is.
No, keep going.
Is she, is she still there?
Yeah, she's still here. Yeah, she's still here.
On a two-year, just revealed plans to bust through a multimillion dollar, uh, whole legal, West School, West Park, Illinois State Budget project that we was first made public this Friday by tweet. Given timelines were considered, this seems an effort to rush you another multimillion dollar project that serves the personal interests of relative view, including the local partnership commissioners, she should tax the dollars to Glencoe and Illinois residents. Also, Midwest continues to disregard much less costly maintenance needs of facilities that many more Glencoe residents every few, maybe four years, are needed to prevent further decay and more injuries recurring on such facilities. It also splanders without legitimate representation, tax dollars, and state intentions in initially funding those facilities. One example of this pattern is Lakefront Park, specifically tennis courts that negatively allowed to decay without basic maintenance for many decades. Evidence of this is plentiful and infutable. This contracts with basic maintenance performed by neighboring village and city park districts, including some related cited circumstances that exist above submerged water tanks. Hundreds of residents, including those living adjacent and nearby the facility, have communicated their support regarding a new facility that is better maintained for safety and proper use. Some of these residents have communicated to the park district and village for a very long time throughout the past decade. This event overwhelmingly shared and communicate concern and consensus. While all neighboring community park district tenants were fully utilized throughout most of the pandemic, but this tennis was among the safest and healthiest activities for residents of all ages and genders. Those Glencoe facilities were unsafe to use and for some who did not attempt to use them, injuries occurred as a direct consequence of the conditions. It's unfortunate that these days, some public representatives do not fully communicate, actually not put the public interest first, do not use the greatly advanced options to communicate with their constituents, do not seek input and feedback in a timely and thorough manner to ensure the resident funds are from levy taxes are being properly and in accordance with resident practices, rather than prefaces since a handful of commissioners. Uh, it's also questionable when some of these commissioners are appointed rather than elected. In fact, the commissioner was recently sworn in after planning to sell his home and move out of Glencoe, resulting in another appointment by his cohort. It's unfortunate that excuses for allowing facilities to decay became unsafe and causing great are not fact-based and disleadingly provided, even when contradicted by evidence that proves otherwise. You've all seen and many have been experiencing unfortunate consequences of representation that is not transparent, not candid, does not prioritize the interests of constituents. In fact, residents who previously raised the issue of their safety with local park district commissioners were dismissively told that the facilities were safe despite much clear evidence they contrary. They were told to be quiet or the facilities would be removed more quickly than being contemplated and through a lack of maintenance any day. This time just to do it quickly. Yep. Three minutes, so I don't know what you. So I. Okay, um, they were told to join a private country club, but they wanted to play safe. Want a safe, playable facility, they were told to consider deals of providing money as well as accepts of the park district and village taxes. One is anything comparable to facilities being provided by ordinary tax funds by all Glencoe neighboring villages named suburb, neighboring towns. I'll give it one. This is almost finished, just because. Why are we other people who have three minutes? What are we?
She muted herself.
No, sorry, I didn't say anything.
May have consequences for taxes. These are better if you have, if you Glencoe park district commissioner want pickleball courts, plus those that isn't your preferred hobby, perhaps you would go deep, use your position to spend our tax bonds on coronary ear balls. It also consider using our tax bonds on to maintain and maintain the facilities that exist today that were built with residents' tax money. Um, that neighbors and the city and residents more broadly support and could openly and expressly and easily obtain to share this in much more broadly, publicly, and responsibly than you are doing. Communication is easier than ever and whenever you want to communicate your apartment, so that you actively use emails, social media. In fact, you're board meeting highlighting questions for communications on your preferred interest. Please, this time you've come to do the right thing and represent, serve the broader community of Glencoe. Okay, were there any other comments? Good, um, just one more, but my report's here, so I will share his emails though with the board later, along with Anna. Um, so we will move on then to the next agenda of the West Park Innovations presentation in the community of Glencoe. This will be presented by Lisa Shepherd and Chris Lainer. Hey, where's Chris? Oh. Okay, so. Okay, well, I didn't start really, just a little bit. Oh, there he is, we're ready to start, Chris.
Evening.
All right, so as we brought up to the board at our last committee meeting, there's an opportunity for for an assay grant, and we looked over all of our current capital project, things that have been on our list for improvement within a three to five year times plan. And then we looked at the qualifications needed for an assay grant presented to the board, which the board gave the consensus to go ahead and apply for a grant for West Park redevelopment. So tonight's meeting, what we really want to do is make sure we get input from residents to what they would like to see in this park, give some ideas of staff, give ideas what would make a grand project and that are needed and will outline in our master plan, and then we'll outline the next steps. So basically our project goals are to refresh existing infrastructure. So we're not asking, we have certain things that have been identified in our master plan that need to be refreshed in this park. We want to meet our ADA accessibility needs, as the board knows, we did ADA competition plan, and this was indicated as a need for improvement. We have no way to get players or spectators to the baseball field who have ADA needs. We want to enhance the recreation amenities for the beauty and also for school use. And of course, we want to keep the character of our neighborhood. So we'll go really quick to the picture of the field. This is the current condition of West Park and obviously West School. Chris, do you want to say anything about this little?
Absolutely, yeah. First off, good evening, I'm Chris Lainer, I'm the director of parks here in Glencoe, for those who are watching online as well. Lisa, what we have up on the screen is an overhead GIS of West Park, just to kind of start to inform our discussion tonight. This is from a couple of years ago after the project, so some of that brown area has turned green. But for the scope of tonight's discussion, we're really talking about everything to the west of the playground area and sidewalk and parking lot. So that's going to encompass the tennis courts, the athletic fields, the area between Willow and Cherry Tree Lane there on the corner, and a few other ideas, so.
All right, so that's slightly. So this park was acquired in 1914, so it's 107 years old. The baseball fields were built in 1990, so they're 31 years old, way past their useful life. The tennis courts were built in 1994, so they're 27 years old. Um, the playground discovery area was built in 2017, that is not public this project. And the parking lot was resurfaced in 20, or will be resurfaced in 2021, probably. They're doing an alley back. And then the tennis courts were slated to be color-coded last year, we paused that for because of the virus or the pandemic, and we were scheduled to be recoded this year whenever the ability of the little at launch. So resurfacing, as Chris will talk, is more like a Band-Aid to keep those courts last eighteen, until two or three years until we're able to redo this court. Next.
I can take this. So as Lisa indicated, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources communicated that they would be running an open space land acquisition development grant program this year. Uh, that's a $400,000 matching grant. The park district most recently won one of those grants for Duke Park on Old Green Bay Road. It's a great way to offset your regular maintenance costs. So to take something that you really will always need to spend taxpayer dollars on and leverage those state funds to help you offset those costs. So in developing the potential project, we have to really be cognizant of, you know, if this is a grant, applicable project, and if we want to pursue that grant moving forward, if that's the right thing.
Okay, so concepts that the board and staff are not recommending be considered are sports field lighting, permanent outfield fence, and there'll be no parking changes to Cherry Tree Lane. Next. Um, contents, concepts under consideration, which one take this or?
Yes, absolutely. So to Lisa's point, several years ago, we installed a walking group here at the take of center in our park district's master plan and comprehensive plan. Walking areas were notated amongst residents to be one of the areas that they'd like to see growth in the community as far as our infrastructure. Uh, what we imagine is we're going to have to have an ADA accessible path of travel to any amenities that we redeveloped in the park in this project. So really taking what could be something like a boring sidewalk and really making it into a recreational amenity, looping around the park in a way that isn't obtrusive to the neighborhood, but also gives people an opportunity to walk also for PE use, year-round use, depending on the materials we select. Uh, we do have some choices as far as materials go, there's concrete, asphalt, and an aggregate product. There's definitely pros and cons to every choice that we're looking at. I mean, first, concrete is very durable, there's year-round use, that's a 30 to 50 year lifespan. It is the highest expensive cost upfront. On the flip side, you know, there's, there's a lot of people who don't find it to be aesthetically appealing. They think it's not permeable, that it can take away from the feeling of a natural space. Other products that are available are aggregate. Most recently used a product like that on the new section of Trail on Old Green Bay Road. Product is very aesthetically appealing, it's permeable, is a high maintenance product. It would be the most expensive product that we could install in the long term as far as operational costs. But there's definitely a much higher aesthetic value to it. And rounding out the bases, really, we have asphalt, which is the least expensive upfront. There were some annual maintenance costs and some environmental risks that can kind of go along with those processes. It's also a least aesthetically appealing. So from a cost standpoint, it's the lowest cost, but in the long term, it may not be the right product for that part, so.
Just to know is also, um, concrete and asphalt, there could be a year-round use to it. Um, you could allow it, um, shovel it and just throughout the year. You don't really need that patient for re-squabbles, and it will be a found here at Take of, is that people use this walking 12 months out of the year, so you would not be able to do that, the school would be able to use that year. So that's something to keep in mind, what the benefits of kind of the asphalt. Also, what you remember is that the walking path, we're not proposing that interferes at all with the use of the baseball or softball fields. Um, so well, Chris will talk later, is that we want to make sure, one of our recommendations is to make um, the baseball field or softball field more multi-boost, so for use for baseball, different age groups, softball, kickball, things like that, so we want to make sure when we design, we want to get that does not interfere with those regular activities. So our placement of that will be taken into consideration.
So next concept that we really want to look at, based on the condition of the existing asset of the tennis court. So Lisa spoke to this a little bit earlier. Well, we have the courts coming in for a color code, which is basically like a light grinding and a floating job this year. It's really more of a temporary fix. We're going to see those cracks reappear year after year, and we're just, we just feel like it's at a point where we really need to develop a long-term plan for all of our tennis facilities in the park district. So what we're, what we're currently looking at in particular for this site is the potential to convert one court area to dedicated pickleball courts. So we have three courts on site. One court would potentially net us two to three pickleball courts. This, there's been a high resident demand for pickleball. Uh, we have no dedicated courts here in Glencoe, but what we're proposing would keep a similar footprint to what we have out there. We're not proposing effectively tacking on a fourth court on the existing tennis court. We're really sticking to the area that we have and really focusing on it as a maintenance-related task. Um, other consideration going forward is in the athletic field. So as you guys may know, the athletic field in West Park is not in the best of condition. Uh, it's not well-drained, the backstops themselves are at the end of their useful life. We have invested some resources there into making repairs related to a safety nature, but they're not very aesthetically appealing, nor are they very well-used based on the condition. So what we're looking at first and foremost is to replace the existing backstop with similar site-appropriate equipment. So I'll go back, you know, we're not envisioning something like this. That's not going to work at West Park, so I, I would say something like what we have out there now, but clean and new and more of a muted color than the neon green backstops that we currently have. Furthermore, we're looking at the potential use of synthetic turf on the infield of the large baseball field, which is referred to as a pony field. Uh, synthetic turf in, in fields is something rather new in our industry. We were seeing 10, 15 years ago, park districts and municipalities turfing entire fields. And they're developing these multimillion dollar projects, and it was really creating very dedicated use. People couldn't picnic, they couldn't run their dogs, it was really just a dedicated athletic field. We don't, we don't feel like that fits the character of West Park. In particular, it's just very cost prohibitive and it also restricts the use of the park. So what we're proposing is a synthetic curve infield. So that would just be the actual area that's like considered the clay where the bases are. So the benefits of this is a much greater use timeframe for residents and the school. It doesn't get muddy, it's well-drained. It's attractive all year long, it's not going to turn brown, there's no watering needed. We would not need to use any pesticides or fertilizers in this area as it would be synthetic curve. There's no cutting, mowing, or trimming. Included in that is also improved playability for all ages. So right now, the baselines are stat, we can't allow, we can't play a group of second graders on a field designed for seventh and eighth graders. Whereas with a synthetic turf infield, we just move the bases up. There's basically portable holes in the field, you unplug a cap, you move the bases up, you play second graders out there that day. A different day, you pay seventh graders out there. You can play softball, baseball, kickball. It really makes it a much greater recreational asset for the community versus one field for seventh and eighth grade boys. So that, that's why we really think that it, it's a good fit for this project, in particular, the amount of use that we know District 35 will get out of this year round. So there's, there's a lot of information out there about synthetic curve, and one of the big concerns that we always hear is what's the product laid down on top of? We wouldn't be looking at laying it down on concrete or compacted earth. It's not going to be that like AstroTurf carpet that you might see 25, 30 years ago. It's really a synthetic turf brass that gets put down over stone. So it will become better drained than what we currently have out there. So included in the discussion about the athletic fields is the small field. It's on the corner of Willow Tree and Cherry Tree Lane, we refer to that in-house as the K-Ball Field, kindergarten field. Uh, we're looking at making some improvements there, changing the backstop, you know, exploring based on costs, whether we could have a small synthetic curve area there, you know, force ADA access. Where the drinking fountain is going to be right now, it's kind of in a tough spot, you have to walk all the way across the park, behind the bushes, you know, those, those types of things we're looking at exploring as well. Um, in addition, park drainage. So as anybody who lives around that park knows, that park holds a lot of water, especially by the large baseball field in the back corner there. So we're challenged in the fact that when we are holding water in the park system, or typically holding water across all other areas. So we're not able to just go and pump out one particular park because we can't pump out every park. We don't really have a rhyme or reason as to why one whole park is more important than another park. So we really envision having proper drainage in this park, engaging the services of a civil engineer. And in that whole process, it's about draining the park properly in a way that doesn't negatively impact the neighbors. So it's not about raising the park up 30 inches so all the water runs off our property out of the neighboring neighbors. It's about collecting the water, properly storing it, and then feeding it into the village's stormwater system as appropriate. So another one of the areas that we've heard anecdotally is the restroom in this park. So currently the park has a quarter body, it's screened behind a number of varieties on the back of the tennis court. Um, we envisioned having a dialogue around potentially having an individual family use restroom in that area. Obviously, that would be a large cost driver on the project, so we really have to see where our numbers are coming in and what we can afford. A park restroom could run around a quarter million dollars. So that, that's something we're exploring. Included in that could be the potential for a small gathering area like what we see here at Melvin Durlin Park. It's 16 by 16, it's something that we're considering, not something that we're imagining dropping out in the center of the park, but something that is concealed behind the tennis courts in a way that it doesn't become an eyesore or a nuisance, you know. So included in that is also some discussion about fitness stations. So we have some fitness stations in Shelton Park, and we're thinking something a little bit different than that. Uh, we've heard from the school that they would like something that students could potentially utilize. We're not imagining like Muscle Beach here. It's not going to be like a hangout spot where everybody's banging free weights or anything like that. But something maybe connected to our arterial path system, a few pods or something like that is worth considering. Pull-up bars, a climbing bar, something very static. I, I don't see dropping, you know, six or seven park-style Olympic bikes out there or anything like that. But anything that we would do, we would want to choose muted colors. So this is not a great sign for like bright yellow or, you know, neon green. We're really seeking things in earth tones, really to make sure that it fits in the community. As part of that as well, we've heard some feedback from the school about outdoor gathering in classroom space. So we all know with COVID, school has moved outside in a lot of ways. So one of the things that we've looked at is there's something called a Jen's Jensen-style council ring. Basically, it's like a low-step wall with a small raised stone at the front where a teacher could stand and the children would sit on the wall. Again, very passive use, not something that we envision creating a huge disruption in the park, but maybe something that we could link to our path that moves around the park.
It's also important to note that we do, West, we do our girls' sports camp, so a lot of these can be to help.
Yes.
Us in the summer months, for both the shade structure to get out in the sun, and we think bright water breaks through our.
Yeah.
Um, participation, things like that, with assistant, our, our ever-growing girls' sports camp.
Yes. So you've had some significant success already in this site with the collaborative shared playground, or if you're looking to build on that success, and really fitting something that's appropriate for that park site. You are, you are contemplating. So I just want to open up the floor to any comments from those that have joined us this evening, questions?
Your office, either of you have any comments?
I would just, oh, good. I, I just was wondering if there'd be a space for a more senior citizen gathering space of some kind, like you mentioned a, a wall where the kids would sit and teach you. That, that's, that's a good idea.
Yeah, and the shade structure too, we had vision that.
Yeah, shade structure.
Yeah, would be great for a senior gathering space.
What is the big behind this for now?
The garden area?
Oh, that, yeah, yeah.
So that, um, we, we refer to that as a discovery area, kids gather there during recess. It's, there's, there's a whole premise where children are kept way too clean now, and this is an opportunity to really get into the earth and get dirty, and we have different samplings of landscape materials and things to crawl on and manipulate. Bush, logs, rocks, I mean, it's, it's, it's half garden, half playground, and it's a spot where you see a lot of the kids gathering and sitting, I mean, just kind of the chill out spot, if that makes sense.
That's very complex with school and kids.
Um, I can say a whole bunch of things real fast, just to throw them out there. I don't have a timeline.
Yeah.
I don't know, and I wish I would have wrote, wrote down, pre-wrote that email, because the first thing I want to do is respond to that. It's absurd, I've read the packet, this is rushed through, it was a conference meeting, it's too late.
I've read the packet, this is rushed through, it was a conference meeting, sitting here. Just wanted to put that on the record. I mean, if you read the materials, it's clear that this is literally years in advance from happening. To quote your own act of goal, tonight's discussion, not this tonight, but earlier in July, is not to design a project. I applaud you guys for how much outreach you're doing. There are signs all over West right now. It's just not, just a tweet, or an email, or something like that. But as is typical, there's two of us from the neighborhood. So I think it's absurd when you get responses like that. It pained me that you had to read it from your own voice, and it wasn't yours. But there's so many things in there that I'm not even gonna dig into by comment.
Thank you.
Two major points that I wanted to make, and then I added a fourth point, because I mostly agreed with the things and ideas and the general concepts that are put forward in the packet. Obviously, this is very early on, you're in planning, things will happen further down the road, things like that. So there's no need to get into, let this move two feet to the right, or things like that. But the first is, I would really like it, we've got over there the big ball field, and what's referred to now as the K-field. If that big ball field is going to become a multi-use, and I totally support turf in that. There's a lot of great that, too. I'm a huge native plant person, so I'm not a big fan of grass. Ironically, AstroTurf in some ways is sort of better.
You're free to acquire.
Because it's not, but in, in any case, if that becomes a multi-use, like we can move the bases, and it's going to be pony league or T-ball league, it would be really nice to have that other K-area be dedicated like to girls' softball. There aren't specific girls' things so much in the community, where my girl plays softball at Takeoff on a gigantic adult baseball field, and the bases are moved there. There's currently, that's gonna be a multi-use, but again, it feels, it's going to feel like, there. Right now, the kids, it's great to see those little kind-sized kids playing T-ball there. But I think in some sense, boys' T-ball, you're scooching in the bases and you're playing on that base. Those kids are super excited just to be out there doing that. But to have something that is a, that's the girls' softball field, I think would be fantastic from a gender diversity, we're focused, we're listening to that. Along the lines of the, we're listening to seniors, and this is a, you know, this is cool. People can, you know, come and drink coffee, things like that. So that, that's point one. Point two is the, there's gonna be a lot of stuff happening there. Earth moving around, perhaps, particularly in the ball field area, things. You guys have a great opportunity when you are putting finishing touches on things of landscaping to not... I would love to see more native landscaping going in. And I think, I'll go further than just to say, when it all gets knocked down and let's put that together again, some nice native here and there. I'd make a big push for, I mentioned this in my email, that space is massive. And the big ball field, there are no kid, well, no. There are a couple of high school kids who practice there once in a while, who hit the ball a long way. By and large, with the seventh and eighth grades, kids are barely making it out of the outfield. And so to hit the ball from home plate to that quarter potty is probably major league homerun. At 450 feet or something. Like, I think there's space in there. What I would love to see, to take that opportunity, have the park district leave, and a micro prairie or something, adjacent to that natural play area. I'm not a civil engineer. I know the space you're talking about, where there are drainage issues that goes from George's, between George's house, that's right there at the end of Edgeboro.
Yes.
And the, the ball field. What's now traditionally a, this is the place where you leave that area of Strawberry Hill, if you wanna go to the lagoons that way, and you cut up through the back and make it there, which asterisk, maybe there's another opportunity to make that officially, a walkway? Because people use it right now unofficially.
So that's, that's the crossing out of Dundee's?
Exactly. You're going right back behind the backstop.
Do you think that that's something that pulls to that neighborhood with sports?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent. And it should be narrow, leveled out to bike lanes.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's difficult to get the bike stuff.
We're talking about that, that, like, how do the neighbors like that?
It's disappointing that the IDOT didn't take the opportunity to paint some nice bike lanes when they resurfaced that portion, which would've made the travel from horseway and the lagoons or the tanna gardens better. Notwithstanding that, I think, yes. You see, when you see people in the neighborhood, there's two ways that, particularly people in our neighborhood that access the lagoons. You go cut through behind the ball field, or you go all the way down to the picnic area.
So you have to ride around when it's wet though? Like, if you're on your bike, you wouldn't let that?
That whole area gets just slowly through there sometimes, the back. And I think, going back to the native plantings there, I think there's opportunities to take and bring somebody in. And I will, I'm gonna guess a little bit, based on what was in the package, of we might need to push the scope of this project to make it more attractive in doing this. If that means make the project dollars bigger, it would be cool to, like, again, lead on native plantings and incorporate that in as, you know, so I don't know how many people, I see it all the time. The roots of native plants are like down to like infinity, and it's, water management's much better. To the extent that that could be incorporated in there, and the park district can lead on that, it's an example of what we're doing, is both for aesthetics and water management.
It's gonna be what we're gonna take back here, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Exactly.
And education.
Yes, it's adjacent to the school there. It's me, and again, like I said, micro prairies there where you've got educational opportunities. Kids are coming here and saying like, look, there's, I'll tell you what, the first time that I showed my daughter a moth, butterfly egg sitting on there, it's like, whoa! Like, are you kidding? So I think that there's some fantastic stuff there. Last thing I'll make, or excuse me, two last things very quickly. I think a big plug for the permeable walkway for much the same reasons that you've already articulated. I think it fits the character of the drainage issues. It's, West Park is quiet. Our little nook back there in the community is pretty quiet. I don't know if it's the intent to drive traffic there, but I would gather that most of the local residents would be able to say, keep it quiet, because we like it quiet back here. I walk my dog constantly, year-round. I get that there's people walking in December around Takeoff, who are exercise, it's closer to downtown, it's more central. There's no, there's just not. The, again, it's so quiet out there that making it, adapting it to higher levels of use, I think would be...
So the trade-off is worth it.
Wasteful, and it was absolutely not. And I think, to the extent that there's, your maintenance costs are correlated to your hundreds and hundreds of people are doing this and circling this, I don't think you can see it. I welcome that. I mean, it's a fantastic idea to have that sort of loophole walking. For the same reason, and the last point is, I don't see any use for fitness stations out there. You've got an existing playground, which, monkey bar is ish, but there are, there are parallel bars out there. There are things to climb on, there are things to pull. There's tennis courts to play on, I mean, it's, I, I... I have a hard time, I have a really difficult time envisioning anybody going like, oh, let's hustle over to West and, like, do some sit-ups, I think, on a bench or something. Like, and it, I don't know, it just doesn't...
How many uses there for T-ball?
Now, we see use maybe 10 weeks a year, 12 weeks a year.
Yeah, they can't use the big field like where they're basing, and they're doing other things, making the big field more flexible.
They can't now. Now, look, if we were to do, if we were to do a multi-surface, multi-age group field, we could use that for some kindergarten games. I think we would likely find that there's gonna be, obviously, competition, multiple age groups. So I, the added inventory of the additional field is important. But the K-field is not necessarily as impacted by water conditions as the, the larger field at the back of the park.
The big field too, the, the grass conditions get to a point where because of the water, where you can't, the equipment, the crust, the, the actual field, you can't mow it. And if you had a, like, T-ball kid, you'd be like hitting into the US Open rough, where the ball would just go boom.
Definitely are like reading verbatim from a concern, even like, ah, the grass was so long, the kids couldn't get the ball in the field.
It's, yeah.
I just have one question. So I'm looking at the aerial view, and I used to pick up my son there in third and one grade. But I don't quite understand, and I'm just trying to check where the native plantings would go. If you wanna take like 30 seconds, say, plantings here, plantings there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, go ahead, absolutely.
Tough for you guys. So behind this field, this is where Chris was talking about, where a lot of the water, and then right up there is where people cut through to Dundee to get to there.
Okay.
I think there's opportunities here. You know, when, when I say natives, a lot of people think like purple cove flowers are like pretty, like shiny things like that. But there's a lot of other grasses and irises and things like that that do well in moist areas and also work on that. But one of the other points that I was making is that this natural area, adjacent here, there's the T-ball field, and like six inches past the infield gets used, because the girls don't hit that far, and the T-ball kids don't hit that far. Sometimes there's football in the fall that happens here, where kids practice lacrosse. But, and, and again, where I mentioned here, this is a massive shot for any kid playing on this field. I think there's opportunities, like, kind of, oh, in this area, or even around this natural area, back in here. I think there's a lot. It looks like, in the picture, kinda cramped. When you're there, it's, it's big. It's just, it's really big, and I think there's a lot, like, adjacent here, toilet, whatever, this here, and again, that, a lot here. And I think the village is doing a lot on the other side, on the Dundee side of that, in terms of putting, planting some native trees, plants and grasses on there. Which looks good and, you know, might be a nice compliment on the other side of that, on the, you know, that hedgerow.
So let me ask you a question there.
So that particular berm.
Thanks for pointing that out, that's really helpful.
Let me ask you a question, just as someone who... Is your, is your house visible from this photo?
No.
Okay, so it's...
Um, where her compu?
Well, it's over here. So one of the, one of the particular things about that landscape around Dundee is it's not what we would define in the industry as high-quality plantings. It's mostly buckthorn, honeysuckle, things that kinda can fall on that invasive species.
In that brush area, right?
Yeah, exactly. How, how critical, because if we were to do a native restoration of that area, we would lose our screen to Dundee Avenue.
Yes, we would.
Is temporarily. Yes, we would have residents that were used to a 40-foot-tall screen of buckthorn now viewing traffic on Dundee Avenue. So how, how important do you guys think that that screen is to those folks who may live on Willow Tree later? Do you happen to live on Willow Tree?
No, I don't, but I, but I would think that people who live on Willow Tree would need that tougher. Hey, what you mean, you're talking about taking that away?
Well, if, if we're talking about native plantings, there's a potential for, you know, looking at some of those areas for plantings. And I just wanted to kind of understand the community feeling on that particular berm. I'm not proposing taking it away, I'm just asking the question. That's good feedback. That, that's what my thought was as well, so.
Does someone on the other side of Dundee, because I'm right there on the other side? And just my personal feedback as a resident, not as a board member, is that I wouldn't like that taken away, because I, I can see it from my house. And when the school trimmed stuff away, I didn't like it. I mean, they put stuff back now, but that's just my opinion from someone who's on the other side of that street.
So I'll take it a little bit different view there. So you're talking about this, there's an elevation change there?
Yes.
And so, like, you know, you talked about before, when you go back behind that, you've gotta go up an embankment, and then it levels out to what is basically a grade for Dundee. So the entire park is probably, you know, the drainage is issue, because it's about six feet below Dundee grade. Yes, in here, a ton of buckthorn, a ton of like nasty stuff. If you live on Willow, and I appreciate Steffi's on the other side, and she's looking at a different thing happening. Two things, and I'm only gonna comment about what you would think about in terms of seeing the Dundee traffic. If you live on Willow Tree here, you know, your sightline here is school, 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 tennis courts, school, 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 tennis courts. You know, maybe four houses there to the end, who've got direct line of sight view to there. I'm not advocating like burn it down, like, let's see, like, all kinds of cars. I do think that you could have an opportunity to maybe selectively pull, and I don't mean pull one tree here. They're moving, you might be able to phase something in where you say, we're gonna replace...
We previously had lived with kind of native pots, where we might take a 10-by-10 box and clear out all the evasives, and then plant native trees and shrubs and things in that area. And then you're not going from, you know, 40-foot-tall screens to, you know...
Yes.
So I, I appreciate...
And I think even to the extent that you're here, when you're looking out over that, you are... You know, that's, that, from here to Dundee, probably a hundred foot yard. Is the size of that portion of Willow Tree, that you are looking across both of those ball fields into a berm up. Even if you're removing park district buckthorn that is part of that screen, on the other side of that, like where the photo cuts off, is the area in which the village has now also cut down a lot of stuff. Their very young trees are going in, bushes. I don't expect those to be screened. They don't look like that, they look like single stems for the most part. I don't live on Willow Tree. I think there, there's a way to do it to mitigate that concern, but still... Again, I mean, this, you're absolutely right, the buckthorn. The neighborhood is crawling with buckthorn, mainly because it's developed in the late 50s as a bred a ladder track. Like, let's put houses everywhere, and the buckthorn grew like it's supposed to, highly aggressively, everywhere. And it went up quick, and it provided a lot of people's screens. And now we're realizing that, maybe that wasn't the best approach.
Thanks. Thank you, I appreciate it, and hope you're in, but thank you very much. So what next up, we'll be sharing everything we learned here, and then emails that we received with our architects, and some of the native plantings. We've already actually started talking to them about that, similarly to what we did at Takeoff. And so they're, they'll get to work on this, and we're gonna share their concept plan. On Tuesday, August 3rd, we're having a meeting, it starts at 6:00 PM. I invite you to join, and us in that one, tell your neighbors. Architect will be here to develop, to show the concept plans that we've spent for Ozland. Those can be tweaked, what can't be tweaked is any major elements we put into Ozland. So if you say we're gonna put a shelter, we have to put a shelter, exactly where it is can be, and things like that. So we'll be sharing those conceptual drawings at that meeting, and then sharing with our board the input from that meeting at our Southern Park Board meeting.
I will not be able to attend that.
Okay.
Would there be an opportunity to perhaps, you know, advance?
No, just send me an email, or I have your email, I do have your email. You come in before that, you can take a look at it, so.
Good.
All right?
Thank you.
Obviously, just on behalf of the board, I have to say, this is exactly how it's supposed to work. You shared with us really valuable information that certainly represents your point of view, but I'm guessing reflects the neighborhood. I don't know if you're in that neighborhood, you're just speculating on what people want. Very much appreciated advocating for our very large population of seniors who do like to have social areas to gather. I mean, what's beautiful about this design, where it looks so much better than I would have liked, stepping on it, in the atmosphere or something, is how flexible all of these elements... is how flexible all of these elements are for more than one group of people. So we have, and I really liked you advocating for girls volleyball sometimes with things about that girls are something of their own because, you know, baseball is a boys' sport. You have to just do baseball. It feels like girls are just having to overlay their sport onto a boys' baseball game. So I really do appreciate that. But all of these elements are very flexible. And you've got the 3rd, 4th graders using them. You've got the neighborhood using the track, the walking track and so forth. So it's an exciting project. Appreciate so much what you shared with us and continue to communicate with us.
I do say two last things before I'm super quick. Permanent volleyball posts might also be very cool to have there. I'm super intrusive, but if you were, you know, to pull a tight net rather than the, that's the good play. And playing off this idea, I love this senior idea, to the extent that it might be incorporated into any like pathway to the lagoons. I mean, I know as much as West Park is not necessarily used in a constant basis, typically by necessarily older crowd, lagoons are, people are constantly walking that five-mile loop.
But if you would change, but if you would change your areas and more small tree areas, was maybe even moonlight, clever lighting, I'm not saying big lights, but something to make it a little bit more appealing. The people at night might go and gather there.
Yeah, I think the, that seating area idea incorporated as a, I just took a five-mile walk in the lagoons and now I'm going to sit down and rest. This is where I put my shoes on, have a little coffee before I venture into there. I think it'd be fantastic.
Or invite your neighbors before you go.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
But by the way, I can see the T-ball area being moved to another area. I mean, I'm not an architect, but I don't think they, I don't think you should take something that exists and consider it unmovable. That there's other ways to lay out that park. And I can see right away where another T-ball area could be put and a girls' baseball could be put. So, I mean, I think that's for your architect to, you know, consider.
Yeah, we'll get the old mention.
Thank you guys.
Do you have anything for any of your other business?
Nope.
Did you guys sign in? Did you sign a sheet? Did you put your email addresses and your phone numbers on there?
Yeah.
Didn't?
But I even know.
Yeah, I have that. We're supposed to keep on sharing information.
We don't even know each other, so.
That's great.
A cute name.
And I wanted to note for record that none of our commissioners play pickleball, so. We don't, we don't need, no need for concern, you know, but.
They can also stream. The meeting is streamed as well.
Yeah.
They said comments, you know, think that back before this, if there's help for the elderly, like, you know, but. So we're having a lot already on September.
It's a year? September.
So, yeah, well, we'll get some input. We'll tell them what we heard.
Okay.
Maybe this isn't going to happen immediately.
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much, you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Right. That's great.
Where it's supposed to be.
Exactly. And we'll take all the input back to our, our landscape architects and incorporate them to, to the design.
It's all, they were all ideas that we had, so. Watching what they said, I think all that they said was already sort of theoretically woven into this, so, you know.
Really, they agree, so that's very nice.
Okay, so financial report.
We are moving on to the financial report.
John will provide the synopsis of the report for us.
Thank you. And just to go over at a high level, some of the reports that we have here. So first, part of the report just covers the cash balances, cash and investment analysis, what is standing as the end of the month. And if you're going to have a perfect, uh, basically, you know, the beginning balance and the beginning balance that made for the month also, so 230, 400 balances. As you can see, interest rates are continuing to struggle. But overall, it's a snapshot of the old cash investment picture for the district. And then as we get into the actual results, we, we, we've got another, I think this happened in case in previous months too, but just the overall context, we are going back four years. The three-year gap compared with just given, I felt the COVID year, for the two years, 20 results. But overall, as we look at these numbers in the, they're solid numbers for many programs here. But it helps me in daycare that that number does obviously include the grant. But nonetheless, they're positive results from that perspective. The beach department is doing fantastic. So that is a very, these are very positive results there also. And then down at the bottom of the page here, just the subring analytically looking at it. And a big change in the direct admin slash ticket department is a direct result of a scheduled transfer that went out previous, this one year, despite they not allowing this past year to COVID. So if there's any questions, yeah, anybody who'd like to address one at this time.
So I'm, I'm sorry. So I'm looking at the recap and I saw there was a big difference, but I didn't understand it. So there's a transfer that we have not made yet or we had made prior to this point?
Uh, correct. That is exactly right, Arden. And that's actually what's on the agenda tonight, transfer.
Good, okay, okay. Good, thanks.
Okay. Yeah, but not the river of privilege here, but we noticed that the ZM2 vast certain areas. Is there some sort of regulatory ZM that, uh, would be given in this?
We absolutely would. Something I'm actually taking a look at. We do, I just need to weigh the benefits of the additional cost that comes along, whether it's additional labor or whatever comes along, participles. And, but, but that's definitely an opportunity and discussion to have.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you. Any, anything, Stephanie, that you have a question about?
Not a question. Just, it's nice to see that customers come back a little bit. And still nice to see the daycare revenue because of those grants so high and the beach revenue. And I appreciate in the packet how a lot of your enrollments are now going to 2019 instead for the comparison. That was really helpful.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. If nothing else, financial, we would like to be expected directly for and there's a shepherd that we do either for us.
Great, so there's a lot of stuff in there. What I'm gonna say is it's really nice to start getting back to normal. It's active and it seems like every day we gave over more special events. This weekend, there's a camp out at the beach. 250 people signed up. Incredible, highest number ever. So it just shows that people really want to get back to the community, especially our outdoors. So we're receiving uptake on the special events made through the Thursday Night concert series, right, in conjunction with chambers, farmers market. So those are kicking up along with our camp. It's very timely and the beach because of our new S model. So we're about halfway through summer. We're doing really well. Unfortunately, have one early childhood camp that did go into a medical, oh, one person that COVIDed, so they had to be 14 for two weeks. So if we're not out of the woods, yeah, just one of these people are, there's still, you know, some kids can't get vaccinated. So we're keeping in mind, we have to keep remembering that as we go forward and programs and stuff. And we keep on watching the regulations and how we school here. So Stephanie's working there very closely. So, huzzus everybody. The, the Parks team did amazing job this weekend. They had a sewer line break at the beach. We're out there, took care of it. It's fixed now. And so two days of downtime for our beach house, but they had more money to put this way. Now we're back to having money. So that was a total team effort with that. So other than that, April July was a great event. We're looking forward to our fireworks Labor Day. Just note that we do have a late front advisory meeting on August 10th. I hope you can be there, right?
I can, I can.
Okay.
Maybe you'll want to put something, but I'll just say.
Oh, that's good.
It's the commissioner one. Yes. So that'll be exciting. Just to be that how that, so is he always think, well, we, we, yeah, we can improve or start thinking about next year already and also people lots. Although that, the teams are doing a great job. They're all tired, exhausted. We're running. Our biggest obstacle right now is hiring, especially in our daycare, in children's service, full-day preschool. Challenge that everybody in the nation is definitely, we are also having. So our team is creatively looking at solutions and will probably direct the board at a committee meeting from now on in regards to some ideas that we have for that. But it's definitely an issue that we are watching carefully and brainstorming solutions. We are very, very close to hiring our world's first full-time dedicated human resources person. So we hope to have that done by the end of this week. So we're excited about that. So other than that, do you have any questions on my report?
It was nice to see such healthy enrollments for next year.
Right, isn't it?
Yeah, and every private camp, day camp got hit this week with COVID.
Oh, really?
Unfortunately, we're in bad company with everybody else, yeah.
Yeah, and we were very, it's one camp, two, a two-day-a-week once. So, and thank goodness it wasn't one of our bigger camps. So they've been, they've been doing a great job, staff has been very safe. And we're, they're outside a lot. They don't want to get outside, you know, wear masks. So, but it's been, everybody's doing a great job, you could say. And as you brought up, and for the audience, their Christmas team has been really working hard on the squeaky train at Duke Park. So they finally found something to stop that squeaking. We had a very patient neighbor of the park, and I say patient because I, I walked there almost every day. And it was loud. So we appreciate her patience and I think we have it solved. So thank you for looking on that. And thank you, Erin, for all the communication. We did a lot of communication for the community for last. Let us just send out a sign and poster around town. They went out all of our social media. So it was not just a tweet. It was throughout the whole different. In addition, we're thinking of doing a survey with our database, email database. Because even though it's on one side of town and by neighbors, it's also a community park that everybody has access to. We like it. They're input and things like that. I'm looking at talking baseball, talking to people, things like that. So we're, we're excited about that.
I do have a question. How does this get incorporated in this school? Such a broad project, you know, not only be covered in the demo, but the use of the space is very, is going to be sure.
So I'm just wondering, how does that, how is that, all right? So right now, we're concentrating on the Ozland portion of the, of the project, right? So everything there, all with Ozland. The school district will have to give us, what was it?
They'll be giving us an easement?
Easements. So we'll, we'll ask that to give the park district easement, which allows us to use the school district, some of the school district property that we're offering now as part of the grant. So still give us easements similar to what we did for, like, there. So we've already talked to, they're, they're, they're to be allowed. And then after that, we'll start talking about other components that they'll be, that they want to include in this project. And then we'll have a separate agreement. We know that we're working together on these things. And she's, Dr. Way already talked to the board about the project and some of the projects we're looking to do and discussing with them some of the aspects of this project that we're looking at.
And since all of it has to be in place for the application of those to Roseland, just what's the timeline of working with the school, is that, whatever elements they would consider to be essential that would be part of what we're saying we're doing?
Uh, no, so only the items that we talked about today would be part of the Ozland grant. And then, so that, that's it. So any other things they want to do, conjunction with this project and be separate monies? Separate. So they've already talked about these same elements.
Good.
They're going to, I mean, that is after us. So that's where the exercise stations came up. It might not be something that, that maybe the residents, the school, the chief of schools, the school district would be able to, as part of the program. So running around, if I say, okay, three, four laps and, you know, that playground is really huge. Happily, so adding a different animal, usually you're in B, they don't call it playground at last, making different exercises. So that's where that came. The shelter, another idea, the council raid was another idea for outdoor last year. So they're trying to, they're pushing kids outside more and more. You know, we see that trying to, so that was a big portion of that. Small things, extra trip was also, they have the same issue that we do. They can't get those kickbacks field too much. So we're ready to just part of that.
Yeah, I would, I would say it influences point. They're completely out of work, like collaborative nature of the project. That's such incredible stuff, working together that, you know, they have a lot of trust in us and we'll try to accomplish here. They're, they're not able to go for an Ozland grant. So the benefit of partnering with the park district is helping to leverage those state dollars for them as well, that they're not able to.
All right. Anything else? Stephanie?
I love the addition of that safe structure, structure there. I walk by there all the time and especially with the camps, as you mentioned. I keep thinking, oh my God, it's so hot. These poor kids, there's no shade. And rather than have to go inside and plus the pickleball users, if they have to go to the washroom, it's just a no-brainer, really. I mean, I know it's not a for certain, but it'd be a great addition.
Yeah, it would be just one, one, yes. Yeah, but I agree. But that's all for, kind of, kind of that before this, pickleball, baseball, these before school district, I do see much use. And we talked about it, actually, for the chief architect brought it out, like, what do you think about ideas on playgrounds? And some of them would take up, so that was definitely something that seems to suss here that they would like to incorporate in that. I'm sure that's, you know, the Ozland, but, you know.
The Ozland grant, we have five main recreation components, so athletic fields, tennis, restroom, shade shelters. So the state doesn't necessarily consider landscaping to be a recreation element, but that type of beautification can really tie into your overall experience on a trail and can create value. So for us in our application, being technically correct is very important because we don't have a needs-based application. Yeah. So we're competing against communities that ain't in greater need. So we have to make sure our application is technically flawless and also hitting all the points. So those types of elements really help to flush out our application.
Yes, does exercise. Yes, yes. So with those exercise things, they call that a grant, so.
Well, if you need to throw another element in there, you know, we still love that little bike circle thing that we didn't get to do at Inner Green Bay.
Oh, the fellas home. I love that thing.
We'll still get to do it someday.
We'll get some day. I don't think you're throwing this park.
Maybe Watts or somewhere, but I still love that idea. We didn't get to do it, so.
I do too, Stephanie. I love that. Um, so, all right. Any other questions?
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you, Lisa. Then looking on the national items, I entertain motion to approve the annual pressures report as presented.
Second.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes, motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve resolution number 928 to create $300,000 in public fund balances for future decades as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes, motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve the final free resolution number 929 as presented.
So.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I am the representative for the Sustainability Committee. And at my very first meeting, discussion ensued. I'm just sitting and listening, as I knew, obviously, about the.
about the village putting up, you know, kind, no idling signs at the schools and at the village. And I said, well, you know, we have to improve the practice district because we have so many cars coming to fit. It's something that should be consistency. And so what it did, what that whole little interaction did was, was sort of justify the fact that the practice district should have representation on these committees that are, you know, some of its village committees, because we do have really good input at times like that. It was one little thing, but I'm really glad that they are able to, you know, represent for the practice. So I think, I believe we're getting our signs.
We actually already had them up. We had, we made them up before they.
Oh, you did?
Which I, I learned, she goes, okay, we already have signs up on, look at that. Before the, before the villagers' schools were in.
Interesting.
So they're out there.
Are they permanent?
They're in our, in our heart lanes for the childhood, and we had, we had, we, we previously had, just drop off.
So that came from our, our internal green committee here at Park District. And part of our strategic plan of moving after holidays, to that side back around.
And now I will share that with the committee.
Also, this is one of all of our inputs, that was part of the process.
Yes, that's right. This was kind of the final thing to make the official, you know, put forward.
Yes, very good, awesome, very good, roll call, please.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes. Excellent. I entertain a motion to approve moving the August seventeen regular board meeting to August third at seven p.m., canceling the regular committee meeting on August third and changing the September twenty-one regular board meeting to September twenty at seven p.m. as presented.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
There hasn't been, there hasn't been a notice on calendars to change.
You have to get it approved, right?
Approval first.
That's what I thought.
Mm-hmm, yep, on Thursday, when I'm back in again.
Oh, okay.
That'll all get changed for you.
Yeah, and thank you for keeping that working, that air clean happens, this starts the next day. So we're staying for that, making sure.
Very good, okay, roll call, please. Uh, Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes, motion passes. Is there any other business? There is not. Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Motion passes. All right. Thank you for the presentation, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Stephanie?
Bye.